Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal, formal action is taken. Washington State per federal guidelines has lifted the requirements for face coverings for vaccinated individuals in most situations. Therefore, council members, staff, and the public who are vaccinated may attend this meeting without a face covering. Those individuals who have not been vaccinated will need to continue to wear a facial mask in the meetings until the order has been lifted by the state of Washington. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-gov/agenda. The city council workshops may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This workshop is also being televised live on Pasco TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council workshop videos is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. With housekeeping out of the way, can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Thank you. Everyone's here. Thank you for coming tonight. May, uh, we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that, and we go to item number four on the agenda. Any verbal reports from council members? Yes, council member Milne.
Oh, yes. Uh, as you know, today I was at the Pasco Chamber Lunch, and I had the great honor of hearing our mayor give a great speech about why he became a councilman and, uh, very transparent, talked about the, basically, the goals of Pasco and the things that we're doing, and, uh, it was very actually emotional. I talked a lot about his parents. And, uh, if you get the chance, I would recommend all the other council members, uh, watching it. It was really good. Talked about the previous council and then why he enjoys, uh, working with our council. I'm getting, uh, just a little emotional just thinking about it, but it was a, it was a really good speech.
Thank you, uh, council member Milne. Anybody else? Yes, council member Alvarado.
Yeah, just, uh, reporting, I, uh, attended the Madam Franklin Transit, um, our last, uh, virtual meeting. Next month we'll be meeting in person, so that's good news and, uh, just lots going on there. Uh, trying to represent, uh, the City of Pasco to my best ability. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Alvarado. Yes, council member, uh, Mayor Protem Barajas.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to share real quick that, uh, yesterday, Sunday, we had a, uh, pop-up event over at the Tri-Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, uh, a pop-up vaccination. So it was a good result. We had all three vaccinations, uh, available, and we had fifty people come by, actually get vaccinated, but the traffic coming through. We also did, uh, food boxes from second harvest, so we had about a hundred families coming by.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. And with that, I will share, um, as, uh, council member Milne shared, I spoke at the Pasco Chamber of Commerce luncheon today, and it was so refreshing to be in person and having these meetings and all these businessmen, uh, and women show up to the meeting. It was wonderful to see. Uh, I've had a few ribbon cutting ceremonies where those, uh, those businesses became members of the Pasco Chamber of Commerce, and I just got to share, um, a little bit of history. It was really ironic because it was the first time I really got to present myself in public to the businesses of our community, and it was kind of an exit speech as well. So, uh, this, uh, it's been pretty, pretty awkward, uh, in many ways, but, um, you know, we're staying positive and moving forward in, in many other ways. And also, uh, after the meeting, I was confronted with several businesses, and I just want to send out kudos to our staff and in particular, uh, to our community and economic development organization, uh, who I know are under a lot of pressure as the pandemic is easing up its restrictions and there's starting to be a lot of activity going on, and there's a lot of, uh, issues that may need to be fixed, and most of the time we probably just hear the negative, but there was a lot of kudos going out to that department, um, with, uh, the department stepping up and, and helping them out, uh, get things going again. So thank you very much for that. All right, with that said, uh, we'll move right along and get the meeting going with items for discussion. And first, we have our Washington State Legislative Session update. City Deputy Manager Adam Lincoln, do you want to kick us off with that?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, tonight we have, uh, Brianna Murray back with us again to, uh, give us an update on, uh, some of the items that took place during the, uh, during the session, and then of course we had our, our tour, uh, with, with some of our lawmakers, uh, just about a week ago, so I'll, uh, turn it over to her to provide the update. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Brianna, and thank you for coming, and, uh, thank you for bringing the special guest as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. There we go. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's wonderful to be here. It's been so long since I've been to a council meeting in person. I forgot how to turn on the mic. Uh, it was also wonderful to be able to do the Pledge of Allegiance in person. A special thanks to your finance department for providing childcare this evening. Um, it's an added service as a client that I greatly appreciate. Uh, I have a PowerPoint presentation for you all, so do I need to do something to bring that up or will it come up automatic? There it goes. Okay, wonderful. So, um, first, we are joined by Holly Cochi as well. She's joined virtually, and I think you all have met her. She assists me um, in being your eyes, ears, and lobbyists in Olympia. This evening, we're going to go, going to provide you with an overview of the 2021 legislative session, talk about the outcome of your legislative priorities, and then cover a fair number of additional legislative issues, uh, that weren't necessarily on your priorities, but will have an impact on city business, and talk about next steps and how to prepare for the 2022 legislative session. So, starting first with a broad overview of the 2021 legislative session, the legislature, as a reminder, operates on a two-year cycle, and this was the first year of that two-year cycle or the legislative biennium. As the first year of that two-year cycle, it was scheduled to be a long legislative session, um, and scheduled to last a hundred and five days, uh, January through April. Unique this year, um, like many things, it was conducted almost entirely in a virtual format. Uh, Democrats held the majority in both the House of Representatives and the State Senate. They had stronger majorities than they've had in recent years, and as such, they were really able to set the agenda for this legislative session. Um, and they, Democrats, I highlighted four items that they wanted to accomplish. They wanted to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic, address equity and racial issues, address climate change, and spur economic recovery. And they considered a total of one thousand seventy-five bills along the lines of those topics of those three hundred and thirty-four passed into law. For comparison, that is about half as number of bills being introduced as what we would see in a regular session, so the virtual format did limit the number of bills introduced. However, it is on average, maybe just slightly below what would typically pass into law. So while they considered fewer bills, approximately the same number were enacted. In addition to considering policy bills, the legislature also adopted biennial operating capital and transportation budgets. The city has those three budgets that they balance, and their, their fiscal year runs July 1 of 2021 through June 30th of 2023. So they've adopted those two-year budgets, and next year they'll be making amendments to those two-year budgets. They received, uh, four point two five billion dollars in federal funds through the American Rescue Plan to help balance all three of those budgets. Additionally, they enacted a capital gains tax which generates four hundred and fifteen million for the biennium. That capital gains tax is going to be challenged in terms of whether or not it is, uh, constitutional, um, but it is balanced. It, it is, uh, revenue that they've booked in their budget as part of balancing it. They reserved about one billion, they held about one billion dollars in reserve. Uh, and of those three budgets, the one that's most lean and struggling the most is the transportation budget. Of all the budgets, that's the only budget that has not seen revenues return to pre-pandemic levels. Uh, and there's an increasing demand to fund new projects, new transportation projects, but no revenue to fund those. Given that, there was a lot of conversation about a grand bargain that would allow the climate, climate change and transportation issues to be addressed. So the grand bargain that was discussed throughout the legislative session included three elements. A low-carbon fuel standard which reduces the carbon content of fuel, which has the likely, uh, impact of increasing the cost of fuel without generating any additional revenue. Cap and invest proposal which requires emitters to get a permit for emitting greenhouse gas emissions, not too different than like a stormwater permit. Um, but, uh, but when a, an emitter would have a certain allowance for how much greenhouse gases they may emit, and then if they become more efficient, they're allowed to trade their allowance, um, to others who may need it. It does generate a significant amount of revenue, uh, and through this grand bargain discussion, five billion dollars of that revenue would be dedicated to transportation. The third element of the grand bargain was a transportation revenue package, which would take that five billion dollars from Cap and Invest, couple it with an increase in gas tax, as well as a dozen or so additional increases in existing fees in order to fund a project list as well as maintenance and preservation of the state system. The legislature enacted the first two elements of this grand bargain, the low-carbon fuel standard and the Cap and Invest, but they could not reach an agreement on a transportation revenue package. The House and Senate each had proposals introduced, but they were simply too far apart. The low-carbon fuel standard and Cap and Invest proposals, as they passed the legislature, included language that linked them to a transportation revenue package, but the governor then vetoed that language, thereby sort of breaking this grand bargain that was discussed. Even though the grand bargain is now not linked altogether, legislators on both sides of the aisle have indicated they plan to challenge the governor's use of this veto authority and that there's a really strong interest in the development of a transportation revenue package. That is all important context to reviewing your 2021 funding requests and the outcomes of them, and overall, uh, we had a pretty good legislative session. Uh, within the capital budget, uh, the city received one million dollars for the MLK Community Center. Uh, we, uh, received, the Port of Pasco received seven point five million for the Ryman Industrial Center. We will note that that does require a signed agreement from a food processor. Uh, and two point seven million dollars was allocated to a Tri-Cities Behavioral Health Facility, which you all had indicated strong support for. In addition to those capital budget investments, uh, we had requested funding within any transportation revenue package for the Oregon Avenue overlay, Sylvester Street Bike Ped Crossing and US 12 Safety Improvements. I'm, uh, pleased to share that in all of the discussions around a transportation revenue package, those projects were included. What this means is that if there is an agreement reached on a transportation revenue package, that we're well positioned to receive funding. Uh, whether or not an agreement is reached is a bit out of our hands. I want to note that in addition to that specific capital and transportation funding, that there were two other policy items that have a funding connection. That was the passage of, uh, Senate Bill 5345, which creates an industrial symbiosis grant program, which will be a grant program that the Process Water Reuse Facility can be funded through, and the passage of, um, a tax increment financing, which is an economic development tool, which will help the Ryman Industrial Center, um, receive adequate funding. Are there any questions about your funding requests before I move on to the, uh, details of some of the additional issues the legislature tackled this session?
Any question? Yes. Just a quick question. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a quick question on the Ryman Industrial Center. It says plus tax increment financing. What does that look like?
So tax increment financing is an economic development tool where the increased and assessed valuation uh, generated from whatever private development occurs there can be dedicated toward paying for the public infrastructure that allowed that private development to occur. Um, it's an economic development tool that exists in forty-eight other states, and the legislature this, just this past session allowed Washington State to join the rest of the nation in utilizing that economic development tool.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I, oh, go ahead, council member Alvarado.
Yeah, just, uh, curious what the purpose of the veto, what the rationale was given for the veto. I'm not sure if that was public.
Sure. So the, um, low-carbon fuel standard and the Cap and Invest proposals could not have been enforced if a transportation revenue package were not enacted, and so the governor's statement when he did the veto was that he didn't want, um, sort of the discussions around a transportation revenue package to hold up progress on either of those proposals in addressing what he views as a climate crisis and something that's very urgent.
Thank you, and I have one quick question. If, if there was to be an agreement in the transportation revenue, revenue, are those, are those quantities pretty much, uh, can they vary or are those going to be the quantities that would be funded?
Great question. There's no guarantees in the legislative process, um, and I never want to, you know, count anything until it is truly signed into law. We are well positioned to receive the dollar amounts that are included on the slide. That doesn't mean we're guaranteed to. Um, they may revisit the project list, um, and, and renegotiate those in future legislative sessions. But thus far, um, all the proposals include the three projects at those funding amounts.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so one of the big areas that the legislature tackled this session was criminal justice or police reform. They enacted over a dozen different bills, um, and, uh, that may sound like a lot, but of the eighty-plus-so proposals that I saw, that is quite a narrowed down and winnowed down list of bills that actually were passed into law. I have not included all of them on the slide, and I'm not going to go into these in super great detail, but what I do want to do is give you some flavor of what your police department is now going to be facing as far as analyzing these bills and implementing. So, um, House Bill 1054, um, enacted a series of changes in police tactics, including eliminating chokeholds, uh, vascular neck restraints, eliminating no-knock warrants, limiting the amount of military equipment that a police department can acquire, lim, uh, limiting the use of tear gas and, uh, and putting a new model policy in place around the use of K-9 units. Um, House Bill 1310 enacted a civil use of force standard, which changes how officers will engage in a use of force and whether or not they incur civil liability or could face a civil lawsuit for utilizing use of force. Uh, the legislation was enacted also establishing a duty to intervene if an officer observes another officer engaging in, um, misconduct, uh, that particularly is misconduct, uh, is causing injury to another person. An entire new process through the Criminal Justice Training Commission was created for officer decertification. Um, I'm not going to go into the details of that new process. It was, uh, like fifty-plus-page bill, um, but a whole new process. Um, and legislators advancing this policy have said that this is the accountability element of their package. The, um, the legislature also changed how arbiters are selected to resolve disputes around police misconduct. Uh, the, the, um, uh, perk board is going to have a set of statewide arbiters that will be assigned to cases as they come up rather than otherwise being selected. The state created an, a whole new state agency, um, called the Office of Independent Investigations that will look into any use of force resulting in serious bodily injury or death. Uh, there's, um, also, um, somewhat duplicative, but an audit of any use of force investigation that occurs. So the Office of Independent Investigations will investigate, um, uh, use of force instances that result in death, and any other use of force investigation will be audited by the State Auditor's Office. Uh, the, uh, Attorney General's Office is going to lead an effort that's going to collect use of force data from every police department in, in the state, and they're going to be conducting a stakeholder process to look at additional police data, such as traffic stop, uh, data, um, to collect statewide to inform future efforts. One of the items that did not pass into law that I anticipate will return with, um, some momentum next session is, uh, independent prosecution of use of deadly force. Um, and, um, that was a bill that was coupled with the Office of Independent Investigations that did not advance this session. Um, that seems to have a lot of momentum on it moving forward. The other is, uh, creating a, um, civil liability for police misconduct, which would allow additional lawsuits to be brought forward against the city or cities in general for police misconduct through a state cause of action. Right now that cause of action largely just exists at the federal level. So high overview there. Um, you will likely be hearing more about these as they are, um, implemented, and, uh, this is probably just round one of what will be, uh, several rounds of bills considered by the legislature.
Mayor? Yes, council member.
Um, have we seen, seen any impact on police forces in particular in regards to morale? Or is it too early to see?
That's a great question. I wouldn't know the answer to that. I'm not on the ground in your police department. Um...
Chief Rosky, have we seen any direct correlation here?
Uh, so we are right now trying to, um, uh, digest all of the information that's there with our legal staff to see what the impacts, um, on law enforcement are going to be. Much of what you see up here is positive. There are some things that are going to be challenges for law enforcement, not necessarily for the better, and so you're absolutely right. What does that do for morale, um, recruiting, which is already difficult for us, and of course retention? Um, but I think it'd be premature to try and speculate right now on what that looks like as we're trying to analyze all of, all of the data and what that's going to look like as we implement, uh, these in the next, uh, few months.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. I guess however I may offer my support to the officers, I, I mean, they do an excellent job here in Pasco. Um, absolutely upstanding. Uh, we've made tremendous improvements in the six years that I've been here. Um, so I appreciate the strides you've made, but whatever support I can offer to help encourage and, you know, gauge that morale, I appreciate, I appreciate knowing that.
And thank you, councilman. That means something, and, and it certainly does mean something to our officers out there to know that, um, I support them, the city manager supports them, but certainly that you support them and their efforts certainly means a lot. So thank you.
Thank you, council member Serrano, and, and chief Rosky. Council member Maloney.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Serrano, for bringing that up. I appreciate that. Um, the question I have is, uh, regards to the Office of Independent Investigations. Um, where is that report up through? Is it up through the governor's office? Are they putting it in the Attorney General's Office? Do you?
So it's an entirely separate state agency. All state agencies do fall under the executive branch, which is led by the governor's office.
Is it intended to have its own separate elected official?
It won't have a separate elected official. It will be like, um, think of it like, uh, Department of Social and Health Services or Department of Ecology, or like they don't have elected heads. Their agencies and the executive directors appointed by the governor. The distinction there is that it is not a depart, it is not within the governor's office, which was something that was discussed, um, which would mean it would be under direct oversight, um, and it's not. Uh, it is a separate state agency, and the governor would appoint the leader of it.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure I understood how that organizational structure was going to function.
Yeah, I do want to give a special thanks to the chief. Uh, he did review a lot of legislative proposals throughout the legislative session and provided me with input and feedback. Um, and, and I will say, uh, these bills all evolved and changed drastically from the versions they were introduced to the versions that passed into law. And I would say the vast majority of the changes integrated reflected feedback that, um, law enforcement provided. Does that mean that it reflects everything that law enforcement would love or really that any stakeholder wanted? No, I would say all of these reflect a true art of compromise and that all sides of the stakeholder were not happy with the, the results, which means it's a true middle ground. The, uh, other issue that, the other, there were many, but, uh, another issue that the legislature tackled was to respond to the Blake decision. Uh, so in the middle of the legislative session, the Washington State Supreme Court found that the statute making the possession of controlled substances a felony was unconstitutional, thereby overturning it. What this had the immediate effect of was making the possession of controlled substances legal, uh, and requiring that any previous convictions, uh, under the statute be resentenced. Uh, the legislature grappled with how to respond to this Supreme Court decision. We saw proposals that mirrored what occurred in Oregon, which was making controlled substances at certain amounts legal. What the legislature landed on, which again, I think reflected true compromise, something that neither side was extremely happy about. They developed a temporary policy that is set to expire in 2023. Um, it makes the possession of controlled substances a misdemeanor rather than a felony. That does mean that it, um, no longer goes to, uh, county for prosecution, but is prosecuted at municipal level. And in order to prosecute, um, law enforcement must first interact with that individual and refer them to treatment at least two times before arresting them, so a requirement for pre-arrest diversion twice. Uh, and then once arrested, the prosecutor is strongly encouraged to also utilize diversion programs rather than actually prosecuting. There is no, um, requirement at that point, and there's no requirement beyond the first two times of, of, of deferral before arrest. Uh, the, um, between now and 2023, the legislature has created the Substance Use Recovery Services Advisory Committee. They have a preliminary report due on December 1st of 2021 and a final report due in December of 2022, uh, which means it's really being set up for the legislature to enact a new bill in 2023. Are there any questions about the response to the Blake decision? This is an item that I expect we will continue to be working on into the future. Okay, an oldie but goodie, state shared revenues, something we're all familiar with. Um, this year, state shared revenues were fully funded and increased, um, and it was the first time I've seen state shared revenues increase since before the Great Recession. So it's, uh, significant that they were increased. Cannabis funding statewide was increased, uh, by ten million dollars. That's distributed on a formulaic basis, and, um, implementation funding for police reform bills was provided. It's one-time funding, twenty million dollars statewide distributed to cities on a per capita basis. Additionally, the legislature approved temporary fiscal flexibility to allow you to utilize some of your existing revenues in various ways for the short term, really between now and the end of 2023. Um, and the desire in that flexibility was to provide you with the tools to navigate the impacts of the pandemic. Also, another oldie but goodie is defending local control. Uh, we saw dozens of bills introduced that would have impeded on your ability to maintain local control, particularly in the land use arena. Fortunately, most of those bills did not pass into law. The exception is the two on your screen. House Bill 1220, which, um, requires you to allow emergency shelters anywhere that hotels are allowed, and Senate Bill 5235, which, uh, eliminated your ability to regulate the number of unrelated people living in a home. Uh, you can regulate the number of unrelated people per square footage now, but not a cert, set number of people per home. I will note that the legislature had a very robust discussion around accessory dwelling units and whether to preempt a local regulatory control on, on that, and the governor ended up vetoing the section pertaining to accessory dwelling units. Anticipate it will be coming back with momentum next session. Lobbying is a year-round effort. Um, as a reflection of that, we actually just had our ninth and sixteenth district legislators, as well as the chair and vice chair of the House Transportation Committee out to Pasco last week, week before last, for a tour of our transportation projects in conjunction with the Lewis Street Overpass Groundbreaking. Um, these interim efforts, things like that transportation tour are really important to setting us up for success next session. Um, so, uh, we want to continue to do, doing, continue to do that in the coming months. I also just really want to extend a great deal of thanks to your ninth and sixteenth district legislators, and I would just give a specific call out to, uh, your sixteenth district legislators that are new, Senator Dozier and Rep. Clicker, where they, uh, have been in office only in a virtual format, uh, interacted with us almost entirely virtually, um, and really hit the ground running. Um, not to, not to take away from the effort of all of them, but their freshman performance was really quite impressive. Uh, I think as you are all aware and have discussed, the redistricting commission is meeting, and they will be making recommendations on new legislative district boundaries in November of 2021. And I think I've already, uh, worked with all of you on how to provide input into that process, and we'll continue to do so in the coming months. And I think I've already uh worked with all of you on how to provide input into that process and will continue to do so in the coming months. Uh I encourage us all to prepare for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two session early and often. It is on January tenth. Um with a long legislative session this year that went a hundred and five days, our interim is quite truncated. And along those lines, um I would note that there was one item on your legislative priorities. That I did not discuss this evening, that I would say is a lingering item we may wanna discuss for twenty twenty-two, and that is mental health funding. Um you all had requested that the state make significant robust investments in mental health funding, and they did so. Largely through their capital budget and they funded the Tri-City's Behavioral Health Facility. We have also previously talked about requesting the authority for the city to impose the mental health sales and use tax that. If um if the county does not, for example, the city of Tacoma imposes the mental health sales and use tax. Because for years Pierce County had not imposed it. You all decided not to advance that request this past legislative session, but I would note that the political climate um is such. Where that would be a um a a request that would be well taken by the current legislature if you all wanted to advance it. So I'd encourage uh comments, questions, feedback on that particular concept early, so we can make sure we're adequately prepared. Um by January tenth. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and would certainly defer to city manager or deputy city manager if they had anything to correct or add.
Councilmember Alvarado, would you like to?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you so much for the presentation. It's always good to get these uh fifteen minutes of so much work and some so much uh information. So I I appreciate it. Um uh I have a couple of questions. One is on the Senate Bill fifty-two thirty-five and specifically when it comes to ADUs. Was there any specific language on the accessory dwelling dwelling units on if they um detached or attached uh language?
There was no language pertaining to attach, detach. This legislative session honed in on whether or not cities should be allowed to require. That either the ADU or the primary residence be owner occupied.
Okay.
Um that is, the in previous legislative sessions, there's been broader ADU discussions. And I think the discussions moving forward will be broader, but this session in particular, it was about that owner occupancy requirement.
Yeah, and I I definitely would love uh more information on uh the options the city has for mental health funding. Has this conversation that's pretty heated uh locally, especially from a Ben Frank Frank Ben Franklin Transit Board uh um po- uh policy.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Councilmember Serrano.
Thank you. Just a quick question on redistricting. So by November fifteenth, they're supposed to make a decision. Uh when is that in place? Will it be for the twenty twenty-two session? So what happens if one of our representatives is districted out? Do they get a retain receipt for the completion of their tenure? I mean, I know state law requires you to live in your district.
Yeah, so the the districts really become affe- they they become known by the legislative session. They become effective with November twenty-two.
Okay.
Elections. So next legislative session, we will continue to be served by the sixteenth and ninth district legislators. If there is a change in who is representing the city of Pasco, they will know that that change is forthcoming. That is actually helpful because we can kind of help facilitate any transition that may be forthcoming. And engage uh any new legislators that we might be looking to have or um. And and also help like sort of facilitate anyone we might be losing in in passing off information.
No, I appreciate that. That was kind of what I wanna draw into is, you know, as much as we'd hate to see a handoff, we have to prepare for it, right? Um we will know it come Thanksgiving, but until then we may wanna just keep that in the.
Yeah, I will say there's one, there's one scenario where they, we don't know, and that is if the redistricting commission cannot reach an agreement. Um and then it becomes a fairly long, protracted process where the Supreme Court um gets to then draw boundaries. Uh it's never happened before. I think that the commission has stated a high desire, strong desire to reach an agreement. Um and I think there is a political interest on both sides of the aisle to reach an agreement.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments by council or staff. Brianna, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you so much for the work and efforts ever since I've been on council. Uh I've got to see firsthand the impact and the influence you have. And uh just the way you deal with all of our representatives, always appreciated it. Uh I know speaking for uh our former mayor Matt Watkins very much respected how you uh have been able to. To be a champion for us here in Pasco and just appreciate all the work you do and. Uh it's been a pleasure working with you and and you know during all this time and again, thank you for the presentation and for the updates. It's always uh good to know we have somebody that's uh that's fighting for us over there, and I know although we pay for it, uh we feel it's money well spent. And uh thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, and I would just also give a special thanks to Holly, who's who's listening in virtually and. Um I just encourage you as you're interacting with the ninth and sixteenth district legislators out in the community or otherwise, or if you have a few minutes, be a email to just. Extend a great deal of thanks to them. Really, our our ability be to be successful in Olympia is a team effort. It's the ninth and sixteenth district legislator is working with me, it's your city staff. Particularly Dave and Adam, meeting with us very regularly, answering late night phone calls, uh urgent emails. All kinds of things to get us the information we need to be successful. So it it and then you all played a very integral role this session as well. Um and so I I I think it's a team effort and I'm really just honored to be part of the team.
Thank you so much. Alright, well.
I'm gonna go find the childcare center.
Yes, sir, yes. Okay, well, thank you very much. Great report and good update and looking forward to a lot of great things there. So next we will go to the next item, which is uh our six-year transportation improvement plan. And we have tonight Dan Ford, who's gonna be presenting tonight, but uh Mr. White, would you like to kick this off or?
Oh, sure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Just very briefly, um this uh annual process uh for the six-year transportation improvement program. Is a an effort at coordinating the city's transportation projects. It's required by state law and uh it is necessary, once it's adopted, for receiving uh state and federal funds. Mr. Ford and and I'm sure council recalls past efforts at uh this this uh update. But Mr. Ford has an extensive list of projects and will be able to explain many of those or all of those tonight.
Thank you, Director White. Mr. Ford, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh I'd like to introduce uh Tyler Johnson as well. Uh he's one of our senior technicians and uh Tyler.
Oh, she turned it off. Tyler uh was good enough to be voluntold to help me with the six-year transportation plan. I will say one thing that uh Tyler came to me about a week ago and said, my gosh, there's a lot that goes into that. And I'm like, yeah, uh welcome, welcome to uh the current city of Pasco. Um and as everybody has mentioned and Holly as well, or or um uh. Brianna as well, thank you. Um that uh transportation is a real challenge to get funded. Uh and we deal with that almost every day. One of the, one of the real challenges is uh, you know. Unless something happens to your utilities, you don't see those on a daily basis. You get in your car almost every day. You drive almost every day. You see the challenges faced uh with transportation on a daily basis. So it's one of those things. It's right there. It's it's bright. Uh in everybody's face and and we get to deal with it uh uh you know, as Brianna had mentioned uh on a regular basis. We did have a really good tour, I think, uh when uh that Brianna had mentioned. Were able to uh tour much of Pasco and many of the projects, whether those folks on the bus really knew all the projects. That were associated with the trip. Uh somebody put the city engineer in charge of the route. And I can tell you that we actually went from project to project to project. I'm gonna say there were pro- there were well over a dozen projects that we went through, but not all of them did we get to highlight. And I'll talk a little bit about those this evening as we go through this. First and foremost, there are a couple of minor errors due to the large number of projects. There's almost fifty projects on this list this year. Uh there's a, there's a couple of numbering errors that you'll notice. Uh one of them, for example, I think it was uh uh renumbering uh error on number thirty-four. Kind of dropped off on the far side of your spreadsheet or your workbook, but we'll work through the through those in the next couple of days and and get a finalized version of that. Let's see, whoops. Come on, get me going the other way. Here we go. I like that much better. So uh you'll see a little bit different format this year to a certain degree, uh especially on the mapping. But one of the things you'll no- notice is those projects that I spoke about and. Quite largely uh the the emphasis of the area out there at Broadmoor. You'll notice a lot of numbers out in that area and you'll we'll talk about the number of projects out there this evening. Uh but before I start on the new projects, we'll talk about the completed projects or those anticipated to be complete by the end of the year. Uh Road sixty-eight widening south of Interstate one eighty-two, the phase one of that project, urgent road improvements, phase one. Of which there were three phases uh in total. Burns Road pedestrian bicycle pathway, phase one. I believe that is the pathway on the far uh westerly side of a three-phase pathway project. On the south side of uh Burns Road. Court Street Traffic Revisions Project. Uh and a Transportation System Master Plan, which we're very close to getting that that uh finalized uh for you. And for everybody else, especially for us to use. We're looking forward to it. Um new projects, uh again, uh two slides on this one. I couldn't get them all on one slide and still be readable. So uh we'll walk down them uh somewhat quickly. Oregon Avenue Overlay, I think you saw that on Brianna's uh slide earlier, uh Court Street Overlay as well. Uh Road one hundred south widening, uh Road one hundred north uh improvements. And we'll go through these in a little bit more detail when I get on my next uh slide. Buckingham Drive Extension and Signal, again in the Broadmoor area, Road one hundred interchange improvements, both eastbound and westbound ramp. You'll also uh notice at the bottom of this page, there's also an analysis that is associated with that as well. Uh and then the Burns and Broadmore intersection improvements. Again, in that Broadmore area. Burns Road widening uh phase one and Burns Road widening phase two, again in that same area. Uh New Road one oh eight, phase one and New Run Road one oh eight, phase two. Uh and then we have uh our only two projects that I was able to glean from our Transportation System Master Plan. Because it's not completed yet, uh Rainier Avenue and Cartier Street Improvement and Project, install a signal up there at the interchange. And a signal, uh Sylvester Street and uh US three ninety-five northbound off-ramp intersection improvement, and again installing a signal. And we'll see more of those projects develop and and other things out of the Transportation System Master Plan. As I mentioned earlier, I wanted to try to talk a little bit or give you an opportunity to see the Broadmoor area. Uh and I apologize that things got a little bit small, but again, trying to uh you know, emphasize, I guess, the number of projects in this area. Uh and and trying to discuss, I guess, what what is most important. Uh you'll you'll note that uh from previous uh presentations, it's the Sandifer Extension. Uh west of Road one hundred was something that we talked about both phase one and phase two. Those are still included. But now you'll have uh what is the realignment of Harris Road. Uh at some point in time when that works for the developer. And then that will actually, right now, we're calling that Road one oh eight to stay with the numbering system. And it'll have two phases taking us all the way up to Burns Road. I also mentioned uh some widening of Burns Road uh in two phases. The first phase is uh from Road one hundred to Road one oh eight. The second phase would take it farther to the west. Uh we've also got intersection improvements at Sandifer. We've got intersection improvements at at uh Burns and Broadmore. Or Road one hundred, and then we've got corridor improvements going down Broadmore as well. We've also got Buckingham, which might be new to all of you that haven't noticed that there is a Buckingham uh there. But because of the initial in eh uh development going on there, that is one of the roadways. That is intended to be constructed very early on, and it is intended to also have a signal at that intersection as well. As we continue to work our way south, uh again, I mentioned the Sandifer Intersection and the importance there. Uh we're also uh currently, as of today, I've got an RFQ that is going out for. Uh interchange improvements. That's been one of the areas where it's been known that we do need to make improvements. Uh and WashDOT has let us know many times that that is coming about, and as we know, the development in the area. Is going to trigger many of those improvements. And so we've been in multiple different meetings to talk about that, including one that I just had today with WashDOT specifically. To talk about the process, to go through that analysis and and uh the things necessary. In order to make the improvements uh required at the interchange. Uh and and that will be one of the things that I'll be looking to bring a consultant onboard and guide us through that process. And hopefully that process, if we are able to do it as quickly as possible, we're probably still looking at a year-long process in order to complete that. And get all the approvals, including uh FHWA. But again, uh without going down through the list, again, you'll you'll notice that those are the same projects that I had mentioned previously. Uh and we can, we can talk about that if you've got any questions, including the additional projects that we have carried over from last year. The other thing I wanted to emphasize, and we tried to emphasize this in the tour uh that we had with legislature, the legislators. Was that the Broadmoor area isn't the only area of growth. Uh as you all know, the Road A, WashDOT was in uh just a few months ago, as a matter of fact, and they talked about closing the left turn from A. Onto SR twelve and it, if you haven't been out there, it is actually closed now. They've got the striping done, the candles are in. Uh that is a restricted restricted movement. But I didn't want to uh, you know, let this presentation go this evening without pointing out the improvements that are necessary. And Brianna also had um eh the legislators and she had one of the uh improvements shown. Out there on SR twelve, which I believe thirty-one highlights. And it's an an out, again, an analysis out there for what WashDOT proposed back in two thousand nine as a as an interchange. The problem that we currently have out there at Road A and at Tank Farm or Sacagawea is the aggregate crossings. And I will share with you that as I put together the tour, one of the things I wanted to do was emphasize. Uh the issues that we have out at SR twelve. And so I asked uh the re- the 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 uh transportation folks if they wouldn't mind going down Road forty east. Taking a left on Sacagawea Park Trail and then going out to SR twelve, taking a left on SR twelve. And then coming up and and then turning into a, uh they declined to do that, saying that really what probably wasn't in in uh. Tops on their list to make that movement. So we changed that route. We went out A, took a right, went down to Tank Farm and or Sacagawea and turned in. And made the loop that way. We were able to stop out there and talk a little bit about the improvements going on out there. And some of you may know about some of the improvements that are going out there and the demands that are gonna be placed upon the area. Uh and and there's even more uh that's going on out there than than maybe a lot of people know, but. Uh rest assured that we are trying to take those things into consideration, and I think your continued emphasis and efforts associated, as Brianna said. With talking to folks about the improvements necessary out at out at SR twelve will let us uh have some options. And and make those talks easier for us, uh for us staff and uh, you know, for for Brianna and her folks as well. So again, this was just a slide to try to reemphasize that area.
And with that, I'll conclude. I'll just make a quick comment. I was on that tour. Um and it was quite interesting, you know, obviously you get a lot more traffic on A Street. Uh which the the change that was made there was obviously very much needed. Uh but I think they got the message when on Tank Farm Road, uh when trucks come in and out of there. I mean, it's even harder for heavy semi-trucks to come in and out of there. They got the message, uh I believe they did and um. Anyway, yes, you did a very good job on that tour explaining that situation and um that's gonna be one of the areas that very quickly we'll see. We'll have more uh more, it's gonna get busier and busier as time goes on, so it'll be interesting to see that. So thank you very much for that. Uh Councilmember uh Alvarado.
Ah yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the uh presentation and I always get excited when I see these maps and to the transportation future. Um one question I had is I was looking at previous uh uh TIPs. And uh one that was labeled twenty-two on the, one that was eighteen to twenty-three, which is the Sacagawea Heritage Trail Levy. I'm just curious uh if there was any rollover of that or any con- continued talks of that just uh has fallen off, just a little more information on that.
No, I believe that's still a project that the CIP made a levy levy lowering effort.
Yeah, I think if I remember correctly, it was uh and I may be confused on this one, it was uh gonna under uh have some form of uh. Um uh trans uh uh ability to extend the current. Uh trans uh uh ability to extend the current um cyc- cycling um. Pathway uh to go underneath the bridge, is that, am I correct in that?
Yeah, and I I believe it was also a lowering effort that was associated with that as well, uh trying to get uh. Maybe a little bit more room on the top of the levy uh for the pathway associated with that, and I believe that's still a CIP project that's.
Yes.
Underway.
It is, uh Councilmember Alvarado, uh the under w- w- pass. Part of the trail project going underneath the bridge. Uh was one that started to get pursued and it turns out that the railroad wasn't interested in doing what was initially proposed. The trail lowering in that area was too close to the abutment for the bridge. And so they rejected the idea, so I think it's up to us now to try to come up with an alternative solution. And then for the levy lowering project, we pursued an RCO grant for that. And unfortunately, we're not successful at getting it at this time. So those, although those are still on our CIP, um they're not moving forward as of yet and we'll continue to pursue them.
Thank you, thank you for that update, yeah, I'm interested to see what, if we have a alternative way to making that happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado, and Councilmember Maloney.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and Mr. Ford, thank you as always for, I know all the hard work that you and your staff um put into this. This is um no trivial task and I think we all recognize that, especially when um we see a whole lot more additions than we see subtractions. Um that just means the increased workload that we're, we as a city are going to face and can continue facing. Uh what I say, I expect this likely be a trend more or less over the years that we're gonna see more rather than fewer. Um I guess my real question is, I I was kind of surprised that I didn't see any Roads sixty-eight and one eighty-two improvements, no interchange discussion along with that lines. Um I know that's something that, you know, we we have frequent conversations about and certainly um have plenty of feedback from our community. On and I know there's some aspects that are small and easy to manage and there are some that are large and like very expensive projects.
Sure.
Um can you, can you speak a lot to what that looks like in terms of horizon and when that might?
As far as the Road sixty-eight improvements at the interchange go?
Yes.
And we and we've had that one on the list for a while and it's still on, it's uh number eighteen, I believe. Um and and actually, it came up in discussions today and and there's. And it and again, hopefully it's it's on yours as well, but if not, uh it's one that we haven't taken off. Uh the discussions today and and the continuing discussions will be part of the T uh TSMP. Uh Transportation System Master Plan and it will actually come into play also as we talk about Road one hundred. Uh there, there are no impacts that happen uh at Road one hundred that won't in some way impact Road sixty-eight. Uh one of the things that we have at Road sixty-eight that we also have as part of our future planning and our past projects. At Road one hundred is a bike ped or an active transportation element. Associated with that one and we really are working towards that. Um I know that uh burden improvements, signage and striping and Wrigley Connection, which is it just recently been completed. Were some of the initial uh considerations associated with Road sixty-eight. It hasn't gone away, we haven't forgotten about it, it'll be part of the analysis that we do associated with the Road one hundred. Because one of the interesting things about the Broadmoor area and one of the things that you may remember from the feasibility study. That was done by Burge Abam a few years back was that uh. And one of the things that concerned both Wash Dot and federal highways was the fact that uh. Citizens of Pasco were leaving Pasco and uh really putting a lot of pressure on Interstate one eighty-two. One of the neat things about uh the and and um Broadmoor area and the commercial uh development that's intended to go on there. Are the amount of jobs that it will actually keep in Pasco, therefore reducing the impacts. But those same jobs and the ability for the local network to get through the local network into those areas is gonna. Gonna be very important. That was part of the discussion with Wash Dot today and that will be part of the Road one hundred analysis as we go forward. And and has been part of the Transportation System Master Plan focus as well. One of the other projects that I'll I'll just share uh also that has been on the the tip for a number of years. But it's been pushed out, has been the Road seventy-six overpass. That was part of the discussion as well today with Wash Dot. And the importance of that overpasses is that it takes the pressure off of, again, the Road uh sixty-eight interchange. So it hasn't gone away, we haven't forgotten about it by any means. Uh and it's still prioritized as one of our bigger uh issues and and concerns that we want to make sure that we address. But the neat thing about it is we're actually trying to address it at the same time that we're addressing other issues because it's actually a bigger picture. And and the way that it's impacted uh will actually be improved as we move forward. As we keep jobs here in Pasco and and again, that same area that I mentioned in in the east as well. Uh a huge uh employer uh is what we're, a number of employers that we're looking at out there. So again, those local networks will will be important, but again, it hasn't fallen off the radar.
So I'm I'm gonna restate that a little bit, that was a, that was a lot of information, I wanna make sure that I I captured that little bit that that's available in my brain for you to capture all that. So I think what I heard you say is that um. Road sixty-eight in terms of interchange improvements isn't currently on this list, I I looked at item eighteen, I believe that was um. That looks like bike, uh pet and bike access, but that's the only thing related to Road sixty-eight specifically.
Yeah, right now.
Yeah, and so with the Road one hundred Broadmore interchange has been prioritized over that because it's in. Cause it's on the list and the others not.
Well, we haven't had, we haven't had the interchange improvements and and we've had, you know, discussions with uh transportation engineers. And I can throw out terms that everybody will think is funny, but when you get transportation engineers in the room, they love it, man, I'll tell you what. Divergent Diamonds and all the fun stuff that they like to talk about, but. The the real problems associated with Road sixty-eight, the weave that we see uh that's currently exists because of. The ramps and the close proximity to burden. Uh we're trying to address those in a little bit different way than an interchange-focused project itself. Uh you know, and I think what you'll see over time is that those improvements are taking place, will have an impact. On the interchange itself. Um some of the things that we had seen in the past or that were proposed were some of the widenings of the on or off ramps. Some of the movings of those mu- or the the change of locations of those movements to get them away from the interchange. Those haven't necessarily gone away, but what we were told was that the improvements that we made with the signage and striping and the Wrigley Connection. Would have very similar, if not better, impacts immediately on the interchange than making those improvements now would. So. We don't have a specific project associated with making the improvements to Road sixty-eight because quite frankly. There isn't anything that we've determined similar to Road one hundred that's necessary. And I I'll just throw this out there real quick, the Road one hundred uh improvements that we're talking about were actually proposed in its original construction in nineteen seventy-nine. And it was brought up again when the north ramp was added. Uh eh when Mr. Alberts was Public Works Director and it was deemed that there wasn't enough traffic out there to justify it. So it's a known improvement for a very long time, but I I'm sorry, I I don't think that that specifically answers your question, but. It, in my mind, the emphasis and the change in direction of altering and changing the projects. That we did a couple of years ago with the widening of the ramps and the focus on the the burden and uh. The signage and striping and the Wrigley Connection, we really haven't seen the impacts of the positive uh development and the impacts from that at this point in time. And it doesn't mean that that Road sixty-eight won't come back and there won't be further improvements associated with it, but that's. That was kind of the the evolution uh of those interchange-focused pro- projects.
I I think I, I think I understand that, basically, it's that this isn't the. The impacts we might see from improving the interchange specifically in the Road sixty, on Road sixty-eight and one eighty-two. Is not necessarily significant enough to make this the right time to be working on that. It's more important that we work on the Broadmoor and see what that positive impact is um on the overall traffic pattern, especially as Broadmoor develops out and the commercial. Uh developments in- increase, so we're gonna see more cross-city traffic, less interstate traffic is kind of the the hope and the expectation based on the modeling we have, is that?
Yes, and that's actually what what federal highways is requiring, that'll be the first step and part of that feasibility was. Feasibility study was, how are you improving your local access? Uh the intent, believe it or not, is for you not to utilize uh the interstate or the uh state routes. For your uh getting around town, uh they would like you to use uh your your local networks.
Great, thank you, that was the uh, that was the question I had, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. So it appears that uh there'll be a special council meeting on June twenty-eighth?
Yes, yeah, so by by RCW rule, we we need to advertise this for two weeks. So it'll be open for comment during that time. Any comments that I receive, you know, I can definitely bring to you and any, the discussion this evening, as I've done in past years, will try to incorporate. Into the agenda report and again, we'll we'll fix the minor mistakes that we do have in the current listing.
Councilmember Shaw.
Thanks, I do see we have a couple of big ticket items, obviously one we've already discussed uh for the past, I don't know, twenty or thirty years with Lewis Street. Overpass, the second one being the infamous Road seventy-six overpass. Um. Do we actually anticipate that's gonna come to fruition within this cycle? Um obviously, that would. Alleviate some of the traffic concerns on sixty-eight and one hundred. Um can you just speak to that, I mean, I love seeing that it's actually potentially gonna happen.
Well, and and again, part of this is is how do you uh shuffle and how do you refocus and how do you make sure that you're taking care of? You know, development and the needs as you're moving forward while still in, you know, providing the service that's necessary to the the citizens that you have. Uh as I mentioned, part of our discussion today with Wash Dot was uh the impact on Road sixty-eight. And the improvements that the Road seventy-six overpass would actually bring, not only to Roads uh Road sixty-eight itself. But also internally as we, as we try to look at to improving that internal network. And and as you know, many of our north-south roads are collectors eh eh by by nature. Uh our our east-west roads, many of them, Sanderford, Burns, those type of things, we're we're continuing to expand and develop those. As new development comes in and and the requirements associated with that. I do believe that one of the reasons eh that why Road seventy-six is so important is its impact internally. Again, it will have no connection uh to one eighty-two whatsoever, but it will provide another crossing of Interstate. Uh one eighty-two, uh and if you think about it right now, what we mostly have in that area is Road one hundred and Road sixty-eight. So it puts a lot of emphasis on that, it puts a lot of pressure on those two crossings. And 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 again, I, do I think that it'll get done? I'm super optimistic, the problem is the cost with that overpass. It's a huge amount of cost and as we just talked earlier this evening, uh transportation funding is is a challenge to say the least. So we try to spread that out as best as we can, prioritizing where we can and make the improvements, you know. That are absolutely most imperative to make.
Thank you. Alright. Thank you very much, Chris Ford.
Absolutely.
Look forward to uh moving this forward and and giving it to the public hearing and then. Continue.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for joining us tonight. Alright, next we'll go to the next item, which is. A budget adjustment for Chapel Hill Park Construction, Mr. Director Zach Ratkey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, good evening, Zach Ratkey ACS Director. Um brought this project to you last January with the uh construction of the Chapel Hill neighborhood just south of one eighty-two and. Uh east of Road sixty-eight, a five-acre parcel of land was set aside and deeded to the city for the construction of a neighborhood park. Uh staff had initiated a new program for the design of this park wherein we uh solicited and surveyed and 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 listened to the residents nearby. As far as what amenities they wanted in uh that park as well as layout, preferred programming and features. Um from this, we uh designed a park for, that had an open playfield, picnic areas, basketball court, walking path, playgrounds. Um for both uh young children, ages two to five, but also ages five to twelve, so two different playground sets. Um along with an area reserved for the future um for a community garden adjacent uh and and. Was a particular feature of the multifamily that's uh directly abutting this project as well. On January fourth of this year, uh council awarded a bid for the Chapel Hill Park Construction to a general contractor for. Just a little bit over seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Uh for strategic reasons, this construction bid did not include play equipment. Um and we recently had a carryover amount of six hundred and twenty-six thousand at the beginning of the year. Uh of what remained of the original capital uh budget, the assumed estimated budget of seven hundred thousand. As staff was seeking, um the reason that the playground equipment was left out was staff was seeking a grant for the cost of the playground equipment. So we separated that out of the bid, we'll get into that a little bit uh in a minute here. Um in order to complete the community-led council-approved vision of Chapel Hill Park and develop to a modern standard and as designed. Um we bring forth uh this ordinance this evening to seek an additional three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars to complete the project. Uh this allotment is requested to be appropriated from the Parks Development Fund, uh the fund balance within that uh specific fund. Um and allocated to this project. And um so I think some of the notes and the reasons why we're asking for this additional appropriation is um. The playground equipment and uh the fall protection, what we call a pour-in-place rubberized surface that's uh. Safer, easier to maintain, it's expensive to to put in, but uh it also makes it a little bit more ADA accessible for children of all abilities. Uh was not included in the bid as we were pursuing a grant, um we only received out of the about the hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar uh playground and pour-in-place. We only received about twenty-three thousand dollars in the grant there, so we did reflect that in the uh that discount in the costs of our additional appropriation. Um note two, if we look at the uh original budget carried over this year versus the budget for the bid. Um there were regulations that surrounding uh the requirement to have a block wall along Interstate one eighty-two. That applies to any development, including city parks. This was not foreseen at the time we had originally budgeted or done our uh uh estimations for the project. But it was foreseen in the seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar bid that went to our general contractor. Um with tax that wall totaled to just over nine, ninety-six thousand dollars. And then we had three change orders since the inception of this project, so. Uh looking at the design, the original design called for a five-foot asphalt path. Um eight foot from uh our designer landscape architect team. Uh would greatly improve the accessibility and overall walkability of the path around the there, also customer experience. Um it also, change order number one also included extending a sewer stub line from the main. Um in Chapel Hill Boulevard to the property for the future construction of a flush bathroom. Um staff's consideration with that was, well, we have contractors and equipment on site, we have the neighborhood already disturbed. So you might as well put the sewer stub in. Um change order number two, uh with the addition of that, the basketball court. Uh we looked at uh just a five thousand dollar change order to uh provide extras uh. Weather surfacing to preserve and prolong the life and reduce on maintenance costs in the coming years. And then change order number three was the purchase and installation of picnic shelters and a portable restroom shelter, so we're not putting the flush bathrooms in at this time. But a portable restroom shelter would uh conceal the portable toilets that we would put in our parks. Um also provide protection for that, but also make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing than having a portable toilet in the summer months there for the neighbors. Um. It was inadvertently left out of our scope of work and it needs to be added uh to take advantage of the crew and having contractors on site. As well as to deliver a complete project with uh shade, this project is due to complete in July. Um and to eliminate future need to dedicate staff time for the installation of the shelters. Uh we've decided to uh request that that could add it to the project as well. And then finally, the fourth changeover is just the addition of a concrete pad for an irrigation booster pump, about sixteen hundred dollars. So really, the enhancements we're bringing to the project, um bringing in the later phase of the play equipment and the picnic shelters in. So that they could be there when the park does open. Um we also have the addition of the unknown with the uh block wall that we needed to add to the budget and uh. Enhancement to prove the projects for ease of use and maintenance in the future. Um and then obviously bring the portable restrooms in, so that that comes down to just uh adding from the Park Development Fund, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. So there's a lot of ins and outs with the project and a lot of different things going on, so um I'm here for any questions of council.
I would just like to say that, well, go ahead, Councilmember Maloney, go ahead.
Um thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ratkey, for the um detailed explanation about some of the changes that are going on here. Um obviously, we wanna, I think we wanna get the park right, I mean, I don't think there's any question about how hard it is to come back afterwards and try to retrofit it. We're certainly seeing that as we try to um im- enhance and and rehabilitate some of our parks on the uh on on our older neighborhoods. That this is non-trivial to go back there and try to take care of some of the stuff, so certainly appreciate that. Um I guess my 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 question is, um this is a substantial increase in cost overall, you know, compared to what we had. I and I was looking to see how how healthy is our Park Development Fund, I I guess I don't have those numbers on me, I don't. Recall from uh Ms. Siegdel's uh presentations exactly where we're at on that.
Yeah, citywide, our fund balance is three point four million in the Park Development Fund. Um we have about two point seven million allocated citywide for the next couple of years for projects. Uh we expect just over one million in revenue coming in, Park Development Fund is fed through impact fees on our building. Uh, we expect just over one million in revenue coming in, Park Development Fund is fed through impact fees on our building permits and we do have a. Robust permit uh activity at this time. Um, so at the end of twenty twenty-two, at the end of this uh biennium, we expect the ending fund balance to be two point four million.
It looks like we have plenty of reserve um and plenty of help in that fund, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, and to that, I was there when the the city and the community was planning, it's been a long time, they're desperately waiting. I say we get on this right away, uh we get this done as soon as possible, so I'm I'm in favor of it.
Yeah.
Anybody else? If not, thank you very much, Director Ratkey, and I was looking forward to having that and proving it and getting going.
We'll be back with the ordinance next week, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next we go right along to our. Second restated interlocal cooperation agreement for Bi County Police Information Network. And let's see here.
Chief Ken Roski. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, of course, the public that's with us as well. Uh, this second iteration of the agreement comes to you, um fortunately, we with no fiscal impact. Ra- um, to our biennial budget, but it does clean up the uh the uh uh rate. That non-legacy uh members are gonna pay the legacy agencies in Bi Penn, uh won't be affected by this new. Um, agreement which which comes to you uh this evening. And then just for a bit of history and and members uh on the council that might not be aware of exactly what. The Bi Penn system, that's the acronym for the uh joint Bi County Information System does. Uh, it's, it is our brains as far as the data system. Um, for both sides of the river and all of the law enforcement agencies in both counties. It houses our record-keeping and criminal data. Uh, it's where we poll, you've heard us talk about crime data and reporting to neighbors, um it's where we poll those numbers. Um, a- any uh uh data that goes to the federal government, maybe for use of force. Um, crime rates, those all come from this system here. It houses uh all police reports um that are written by law enforcement officers. It ho- it holds subject and suspect information, so when you make a police report. Um, in one city, uh, that gets housed in one location. As you know, the 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 tri-cities is extremely transient or one community. And so the ability to ensure that law enforcement record-keeping um. Uh, is housed in one place helps as we uh look at solving crimes, identifying uh subjects. Or suspects in crimes as well, um when we're looking at solving solving crimes. Knowing that you're not going to uh outrun the police just because you go from one city to the next, so. Um, all all of our evidence and property um is is uh catalogued and recorded in that database system. So it's a one one place for us to account for evidence. Um, it also bridges the mobile data terminals that are in the patrol cars. So the officers have that information at their fingertips. This uh system communicates with the dispatch center. So the dispatch operators, the nine-one-one operators can easily grasp any of the data that is in there. Um, and this data goes back to the eighty, the early eighties, when the system was was implemented. Um, uh between the two counties, so the the legacy of this system um goes back for decades. All the reports that police officers fill out, the report forms, um are all unified and in this system as well. We'll be moving in November, that system is under a uh uh an upgrade right now, they'll be moving to a new system known as Tyler. And that should be operational, uh we anticipate in November of this year. So just a little bit of history on what Bi Penn is versus just uh saying the reiteration for you, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate it, Chief, for asking, anybody have any, yeah, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and my apologies, I seem to have something to say on a lot of agenda items tonight, but uh Chief Roski, uh you know, I I. My my question is um regarding our national's um accreditation, so obviously we're, we've chosen to hold ourselves to a higher standard than our neighboring. Um, uh jurisdictions have, um and I know with that comes higher standard for reporting. Um, and record-keeping than uh than any of them have chosen to 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 put themselves through. And I'm really proud of that, but um I'm curious about how how does, does this fit within that, are are the needs for our accreditation stuff? This system handles all that, no problem, we were.
A- a- absolutely, so when we do go to um making proofs, it's just. Um, just to have the uh a national accreditation, have our policies match that is certainly important. But then, um, and we're undergoing that right now, this week in fact, a peer review of our system externally. Where they will actually look at proofs, so this system then is where our uh accreditation coordinator. Will go and pull those proofs to actually prove that we are doing what we say we're doing, so yeah, this system is extremely important in that.
I just wanted to make sure that this held to our standard rather than us having to ha- help it, so I just wanna make sure of that and that I hear you loud and clear, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, and uh Chief Roski, we're looking forward to seeing that in our next uh meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, City Manager Dave Zabel.
I I just wanted to comment uh and to uh Councilmember Maloney's question. So the neighbors, which the chief mentioned ear- earlier when he's explaining the acronym of Bi Penn, he used another acronym. Is National Incident-Based Reporting System. And so that national standard in neighbors is consistent with uh Kalia and uh, excuse me. I can't even do it now. What's Kalia stand for? Commission on Law Enforcement.
Uh, accreditation.
There we go. Yeah, Kalia and Washington Association Sheriff's Police Chiefs certification, so, or accreditation, so.
Alright, thank you. Wonderful, alright, looking forward to seeing that at the next meeting for approval. Next, we'll move right on to the professional services agreement with. Mackey Spozito, or is it McKay, McKay Spozito for Design Engineering Services for the Lewis Street Corridor, second. Uh, to Fifth Avenue Improvements Project, Director Steve Warley, would you like to kick us off?
Good evening, Mister Mayor, members of council, uh I'm pleased to introduce tonight our senior engineer, John Pedvorick. He is the project manager for this project and he is going to give the presentation on this item for tonight.
Good evening, and welcome.
Turn the microphone on, John.
There you go.
There we go. Thanks.
Um, I'm here to talk about the contract with McKay Spozito for the Lewis Corridor from second to fifth project. Uh, we followed an SOQ process and four SOQs were submitted, we interviewed four firms. And selected to move forward with McKay Spozito.
And and pardon me if I interrupt, but SOQ stands for Statements of Qualifications, just so you know.
And uh, you guys have heard a lot about the Lewis Corridor with recent projects between Peanuts Park and the Lewis Street Overpass. And as you can see, the Lewis Street Overpass ends on second and Peanuts Park is at fourth. And the corridor between them is currently unimproved. So in terms of the sidewalks and ADA access, uh both along the sidewalk and into businesses. Um, and the overall uh unified facelift the city has gotten on both ends of this corridor is currently not represented in the middle. And so this project is tasked with, um, now that we know what the overpass looks like and what Peanuts Parks Park will look like. Connecting the dots for the community in terms of, they know now what they're, what they're getting or not getting out of the overpass and the park. So what do those businesses need, what is it, what does the community, you know, how do we fill in the gap? Um, between those two projects, both both physically in the city blocks and in terms of needs. Um, to move forward and really kind of close the the circuit on this, this really critical part of our city. Um, so as you can see here, there's the Lewis Street Overpass on the right and then Peanuts Park on the left. Um, and pictures from groundbreaking ceremonies of both of those exciting projects. Um, McKay Spozito pulled together some graphics during their preparation for their consultant interview. So we have not proceeded uh forward with any of the design contract work yet. Um, but there were some renderings they pulled together to show generally the sort of things that they would see in an urban revitalization project. So these have not been prepared with stakeholder input, um or design input from the city yet, this is just something they. They use as part of their advertising to convince us that that they were a good firm for the project. Um, but it's really neat, I'll I'll go back and forth a couple of times so you can see. Um, there's a few different concepts that uh prioritize different things. And I think the the objective of their concepts was to show a wide range of of possibilities for the city with the corridor. Um, we go from option one, which is a fairly traditional mult- multimodal access. Where we have transportation lanes and bicycle lanes outside that and then business front, um, that's what people usually see along corridors like this. And this would actually um tie in with how the Lewis Street Overpass was constructed with their bicycle lanes. We looked at a more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly option, you'll notice the cyclists are riding in the in the traffic lanes, so. We squished the bike lane and gave more room to businesses and compromised the the bicycle feature. Another concept went the other way and we, we had a dedicated bicycle lane on the other side of parking. Um, so it's, it restricted the storefront and pedestrian access, but it increased bicycle safety, so. Um, these options will be refined and you might see different options later when we we move forward with the project. But we tried to cap- or the consultant tried to capture a wide range of of different ideas and concepts. And moving forwards, the stakeholder engagement would be a critical part to the success success of this project. Because ultimately, the the objective is to figure out how to connect that community across this corridor, so. McKay Spozito has a a specialty consultant who does community outreach, uh very much like this, and that will be the. The large focus of my efforts and the consultants' efforts is is designing that outreach program and implementing it to make sure that. That when we connect this, we do it properly for the community.
So I guess my question is, and I think you just said it, uh you could go out and get the community input to see what they would like to see. Of these different designs, I think that's wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, and our hope is to do a very early um gathering of input before we pollute people's thoughts with the ideas that we had. So we'll determine what's important, what are they worried about? Um, for their businesses, for landowners, for citizens who who would choose to take their dinner or their family to dinner here or someone else. Um, get a wide variety of input and see what's important and then these might be refined or they might be completely replaced with with the result of that. Um, I think the the po- point of this is showing the the breadth of the the creative ability to come up with a wide range of solutions. Um, and then our plan is to then go back to the community with something similar to this, that. That may be these three concepts or maybe three completely different ones that incorporate the need of the community. Um, and there has been some previous outreach as part of different projects along the corridor, so we're actually pulling that in and using that as a starting point. But then the outreach was done as part of Peanuts Park or the overpass or a a prior now old master plan. So really, now that we know what Peanuts Park is and what the overpass is, people's uh perception of their needs might have changed a little bit. Now that those those concepts have solidified into actual projects.
Sounds good. Any quick, oh, Councilmember Alvaro.
Just a quick, I I'm surprised to uh see that that there's uh options and that 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 there could be input for that and I mean that really gets my wheels turning and. It's really exciting, um, I I think off the top of my head, I'm like, man, like I I would love to like attend those meetings and give some input, but.
Yeah.
You know, being in the um post-COVID world, but seeing that there's some really uh. There were some needs that came that we were not prepared for, especially especially for our uh dining businesses. Uh, I'm wondering if that will be part of uh of uh uh of what's considered as well, I'm thinking like a city of Lancaster, uh California. Where they did the parking in the middle and it it became this kind of uh pseudo, uh like this very mixed type of um. You know, it could be parking at one time, but it could be festival at another, and it could, so I'm wondering if that's something even that we could consider here, I'm not saying this is a time where. That's even appropriate to pitch those, but I I I would be, I'd be mad at myself if I didn't mention things like that and I certainly look forward to um. Uh, attending some of these meetings as well and then community, you know.
Yeah, we're we're definitely taking a hard look at that and um. One of the things we've looked at is with Peanuts Park, I think my fingers got fast in the computer there, there we go. Uh, with Peanuts Park and know now knowing how that will work, um trying to think about how. As our use of that area expands, as the community does larger and larger events there, how we would grow into the cityscape. So there's been a couple of different discussions, I don't think there's something that's technically thought out enough to present as, you know, the perfect solution, but. But it will be a big focus of ours, especially with the proximity to Peanuts Park, of how how that corridor might be used and planning ahead so that. It's easy to use that um and es- essentially grow Peanuts Park out, um if that's something that the consultant finds a good way to do.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Shawna.
Yeah. Well, I saw you had your. No, I had my finger on it, that, no, alright. Um. Will there be an opportunity or or have you considered doing rather than like a traffic study, a bike versus pedestrian usage study? Uh, to make some type of recommendation towards these, you know, if we have. You know, ten pedestrians per every bike, it might makes more sense to have wider sidewalks rather than more bike protection or vice versa. Um, have you all considered that type of study?
Yeah, so I believe there was a bit of work done on the Lewis Street Overpass project and we're as much as we can riding on the coattails of that fairly large expensive project. Utilizing cannibalizing bits and pieces of analysis that was done, that there was a much more robust analysis than we would do for a small project like this. Um, so that they did look at the the bicycle traffic and pedestrian traffic and car traffic. Um, and so the overpass actually has bicycle lanes um outside of the vehicle traffic lanes and then sidewalks outside that. Um, so, uh and DKS did the traffic analysis for that project and they're do- they'll be doing the traffic analysis for this corridor, so. Um, it would be a bit of a gamble, but maybe a safe gamble to say that it might be a similar concept, just in terms of continuity, so you don't. Ride your bicycle off the overpass and look up and go, whoa, and have it be totally different when you go across the intersection. Um, but we will be looking at the the results of that work and then seeing what gaps we need to fill, if there's new information, um. The COVID changed traffic patterns, as you might imagine, for the downtown business corridor. Um, so the studies that were done for the overpass using a little bit older data are probably the studies that we'll actually look to and the data sets we'll be looking to. As opposed to, you know, analyzing twenty-twenty traffic data and then building a thirty or fifty-year project with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and thank you for the presentation and I I like Mister Alvaro, I really appreciate seeing options and seeing different ways that we can think about that even at a. Conceptual level at this point, so my question is about the outreach, um, we're in the process of, I believe, um, we have a master. Uh, master planning effort that's gonna be going on downtown, we have the DPDAs doing outreach, we have um a busi- several business organizations that do outreach. Sort of our businesses in downtown are cer- are currently being rather inundated with asks for what they would see the future being. And I'm I'm really concerned that one more ask on top of that is gonna start muddling the conversation, that you're gonna get feedback that really should be intended for this. Or or this or this, and so I'm worried that some of those pieces are gonna get lost as part of this. So I just wanna make sure that the consultant and um and of course, uh city staff are are. I know they're aware, you're aware of this, but just to make sure that effort is strongly coordinated, so we're not overtaxing our businesses and confusing them. As to what's going on when they're just really just trying to stay stay afloat right now.
Yeah, I I appreciate the feedback and we actually talked about this internally that with all of us running out and doing plans at the same time, the worst-case scenario is we get several. Excellent, independent, very different ideas from our different focus groups. And so we've talked already about how to combine efforts and have things at the same time or the same place, like we had a booth at the Lewis Groundbreaking Ceremony. Um, to talk about the Lewis Corridor project, um and I'm actually working with uh internally to possibly. Even use some of the outreach we're using for this project and tie that in, uh possibly with even some of the same consultant work. To the downtown past or master plan project, so we're trying to find ways to either utilize the same meeting. Or the same, you know, have one one hour and then one the next hour, um so really the ideas flow through and there's there's. Continuity as opposed to a very broken, different focus groups talking about the same question at different times. Uh, so it's, it'll be a challenge and it probably won't be perfect, but we're we're aware of the challenge and we're working on it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, it's top of mind and you're already thinking about how to solve it, I I certainly not not try to recommend any solutions, just glad to hear that there is that that's being worked on, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, similar for the question, thank you very much and looking forward to seeing that on the next week's agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the professional services agreement, um amendment number three with KPG for construction support services. For the Peanuts Park Farmers Market Project, Director Zach Ratkey.
Yes, good evening once again, Mayor, I think we're just gonna stick in the same neighborhood, huh, it's good agenda planning on staff's part here. Um, so as you recall, uh long ago, uh in May of twenty eighteen, the city and uh KPG entered into a design. Services contract to design the Peanuts Park project. Um, they have continued on with construction support services, uh as we have started constructing the Peanuts Park project. Um, but subsequent to the original PSA, we did two amendments that have been approved uh under the authority of the city manager and the ACS director, which is myself. Um, so amendment number one to that original contract occurred on March twenty-first, twenty nineteen, and it really just provided an extension to contract time.
Um so amendment number one to that original contract occurred on March twenty first twenty nineteen, and it really just provided an extension to contract time. Um no amendment to original costs with that. And then amendment number two was executed in December of twenty twenty to provide construction and design support services. So as architects and original engineers. Um there's a number of items, once you start putting shovels in the dirt and you start uh getting uh. Procuring your supplies, that there's a number of questions and a number of adjustments that need to be made from the original architect's perspective, so. We extended their contract through amendment number two to provide those construction support services to our general contractor. This nine thousand, uh that was a ninety nine thousand nine hundred and eighty two dollar amendment, and it was under the original uh. Uh it was under the fifteen percent. It was under fifteen percent of the original contracted amount, and therefore, in accordance with our administrative order on procurement. Uh was within the ability of the city manager to execute. So as construction has uh uh commenced and progressed along, um there's additional uh support needed. And working with KPG and uh Booth and Sons cons- our general contractor as well as McKay Spozito, our construction uh support. Or excuse me, our construction managers for the project. Uh we've come up with a tentative budget of just over sixty thousand dollars to finish out KPG's um. Uh obligation for design support, request for information and other items there, so. Uh this amendment number three that's in front of council this evening is necessary to ensure that that support from the design team would remain. Throughout the duration of the project, which is still on schedule for completion this fall. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Radke, uh any questions from council? Okay, we'll move it forward.
Alright, see you next week.
Thank you. And last but not least, we will move again to Director Steve Warley for the Washington State Department of Ecology one point five million loan agreement. For the process water reuse facility, pre-treatment phase one design, Mr. Warley.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and councils, this will be pretty quick. Uh as council is aware, there's been a lot of activity out at the reuse facility, a lot of uh projects going on, a lot of planning and for pro- post improvements and everything else. Uh I won't go into too many details, um but we are planning for future improvements to the pre-treatment process. There've been a lot of improvements already completed. Uh to support some of that effort, the city had applied for some low interest loans that were available. Through the Department of Ecology, and we were successful at getting a one point five million dollar loan. Uh to do some design for some improvement at the reuse facility. And so those funds will be used to look at improvements for new storage ponds, screening upgrades, solids handling, electrical upgrades and. An extension to a potable water line to help improve the pre-treatment processes. So this this loan application or agreement may look familiar because we've been to council before, the wastewater treatment plant. Had a very similar one for the design of both phases one and two. And we also had a similar ecology, low interest loan agreement for the construction phase of the phase one wastewater treatment, so this is. Very much along those same lines, but just for the process water reuse facility for some uh design improvements there. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question from council, well, we're looking forward, we are uh. Looking forward to seeing a lot of this come to fruition and um we are counting on the future investment of all this going on. And so we, uh at least I am, and I'm I'm sure the council uh would agree unless you have an objection, but yeah, looking forward to getting this done. We're look uh we'll look forward to seeing this in the next uh meeting for approval here, so we can get it going.
Sounds great.
I thank you, Director Warley. Alright, with that, we'll go on to number six miscellaneous discussion. City Manager Dave Zabel, would you like to kick it off?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. Uh I I would note that the interest rate on the low interest loan, not well, it's not as great as a grant. It's one, was it one point two percent, I think, I mean, that is a fractional what we have to go, if we borrowed it otherwise, you know, through a revenue bond, so. Yep, yeah, still still saves the ratepayers a lot of money. Uh a few few items tonight, I wanna turn it over real quick to uh Director White to introduce our new economic development manager.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, and uh council, as you're probably aware, uh Mike Gonzalez in the audience tonight. Uh most recently comes to us from the uh Franklin County Public Utility District. Mike will be taking on the city's Economic Development Manager position, and it's. Although he's been here all day, today was his first day, I haven't seen him until tonight because he's been in new employee orientation. But it's a very coincidental and and uh kind of a happy circumstance that we talked about. Many of the downtown projects that are happening because, of course, we'll be looking uh to Mr. Gonzalez. For a a great deal of assistance, not only with business recruitment and retention in general. But particularly with the interface between the city and uh the downtown organizations. So I don't know if uh Mr. Gonzalez wants to say a word or two, uh I know it's kind of on the spot, but.
Mr. Gonzalez, the pleasure having you here tonight, I've seen you a couple times, and he's a narrator of one of our um um. Was campaigning for.
Yeah.
For running the last thing, so.
Well, it's it's an honor to be here, I'm on the spot, but I'm a former TV guy, so I've never had a loss for words, right? Uh but Director White, uh really appreciate it, um wanna thank Dave Zabel, uh Adam Lincoln. And Rick for giving me this opportunity, and certainly the entire council, um it's an honor to work for the city of Pasco. Uh I've been a resident of Pasco, you know, going back to twenty sixteen when I came uh as a journalist. So uh leaving to Phoenix and coming back, it's really come full circle. Uh so for me, um what I can do is promise each and every one of you, the citizens of Pasco. And I think I'm known for this, always giving one hundred and fifty percent. To me, uh my strength is really to articulate the vision of Pasco. To let the entire Pacific Northwest know how special we are, so. Every single day, I I promise each and every one of you, I'm going to do that. Uh ultimately, my vision is is to let everybody know there's not an East Pasco, there's not a West Pasco, there is a One Pasco. And if I can do that, um I've ac- accomplished my mission, so. Uh that is my promise every single day to uh really do that, so again, thank you for putting the trust in me. Uh again, I promise one hundred and fifty percent effort to make this the best city in the Pacific Northwest, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you, Mr. White for the introduction and uh.
No sign off, Mike? We keep telling him he's got the job, right? Anyway, so a couple other items, uh just a couple calendar events, uh wanna make council. Whoever remind you of Juneteenth celebration this weekend. And so the mayor will be reading a proclamation uh as part of their opening program at ten AM at Kurtzman Park. And also, uh we have a coffee with a cop, three thirty to six PM at Andy's North uh on June sixteenth, so, and then. One last item, um you know, our population continues to increase, we talked a lot about that tonight and and number of the projects and. And uh how we're dealing with some of that, but our uh Office of Financial Management uh. Population estimates came out last week, and we went up about twenty five hundred. And so our our new number is seventy nine thousand five hundred and eighty, so just under eighty thousand. And uh you know, we've went yet to here, you know, we'll have the US Census numbers uh coming out in, I think, September. Is the expectation, so I I'm I'm sure we'll get a little bit of a bump there, so. We're hovering around that eighty thousand doll- eighty thousand uh population mark, so.
Well, you just made that a lair of me, City Manager Dave Zabel, I said seventy eight thousand dollar uh people earlier, but.
It was on your slide, that number was on your slide, so.
Seventy nine, seventy nine five hundred, that's that's pretty incredible. And um and it's just gonna keep going from what the way it looks, so. Uh yeah, the council and the city staff, everybody has our work cut out for us, so thank you very much for that, anything else, City Manager Zabel?
That's all I had for this evening.
Any anybody from this council have anything? Councilmember Ross.
Um I wanted welcome anybody to the Juneteenth Celebration. Because there is a kickball tournament that I somehow got roped into, I haven't played kickball since middle school, but. It sounds like fun, so if you have a team and you wanna play, bring it.
Great, yep, and I will be there, obviously, as been mentioned, to read the proclamation. I've attended those Juneteens, and the food is fabulous, the activities are great, the people are great, so. Uh welcome everyone uh for next Saturday, it'd be a great turnout, and that way we can honor also uh the whole meaning of Juneteenth, so. And if there's nothing else, no need for an executive session tonight?
Not this evening.
Thank you, so with that, it is eight thirty nine, this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.